That doesn't work.
Yeah.
All right.
It does work, so he did put the new, uh, driver in. Hopefully it's all. So far, so good.
At nine o'clock on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, I will call the ChickSA County Board of City Directors meeting to convene. Roll call. All members are present, along with Board Secretary Sheila Shalke. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda that was published?
Oh.
Second. Motion by Travis, second by Steve, to approve the agenda as presented. I should clarify, this morning, I got an email from Travis Squires, um, the ten thirty might not happen, right? A ten thirty might happen around ten forty-five. So depending when he shows up, driving in from Des Moines. Otherwise, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Approve the minutes for May twelfth, last Monday. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Isaac, second by Scott, to approve the minutes for May twelfth. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. And then we have a special, very short meeting on May thirteenth for a liquor license.
Very short.
Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Is there a second? Second. Motion by Steve, second by Isaac, to approve the May thirteenth board minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Oh, Steve.
Travis, Ross, the motion carried four zero. Discuss review data processing contract in hours. Um, it was debating all week how to present this to you guys. Um, if you guys don't think we should stay with the current contractor, um, let's discuss that. If not, I did reach out to Denny Ones from two thousand twenty FX to see where he was at for hours blocked. We blocked four hundred hours this fiscal year. You can see in his email that you guys got this morning that he only used about two ninety-two-ish. He has a hundred and nine hours left for the next, what, six weeks? He is gonna try to get a lot of stuff done for this year with those hundred and nine hours. Um, he is recommending to go out for three hundred hours blocked, um, for next fiscal year. I believe it's the same rate as the current year. You can see that in his service agreement, which is on page, page, that's the total, yeah. But on page two, the normal casual labor rate is a hundred dollars per hour. I think he gives us the discount of ninety bucks an hour. If we need extra hours, um, it's at ninety five dollars an hour. I think that's how you read it. So it's up to us to pick the number of hours.
You recommend three hundred. I mean, if you guys want to reset to ninety-five, which would happen next time.
And then that is adjusted per month left of the contract. Um, other people that use two thousand twenty is EMS, has their own contract, and the county assesses, has its own contract. So this three hundred hours would be for the rest of the county's departments. Does it have a single contract a few, Sheila, for elections?
No, but we pay for it.
Okay. Is there anything that the board would like to see differ or is there a direction of using the contractor that we currently use, two thousand twenty FX, Denny Ones? And how many hours for the block?
Aye. I think Danny did good work. The only question I got is what happens if something fails.
Yeah. That question's been posed many times.
Yes.
Most likely we'll have to hire somebody out of ChickSA County and, um, some of the nonprofits or CSS, they use ITG, I believe, out of Waterloo. They're more of a statewide agency for IT. Unless somebody else knows somebody else that we would contract.
I don't know. I can.
That's why I said it was hard to put on the agenda and say what we wanna do and I get your concern.
Over the previous years. I think the previous years was like, has he ever gone over three hundred?
Well, he did. That's why he had to go to four hundred hours, but that was a lot when he had enough.
Correct. That's why they got their own separate now. That's why I think he can be just fine at three hundred.
The sheriff's office rebuilt their entire, entire system, but part of their system in the last year also, they brought in all their new technology for their cameras and everything else in their end car. These first systems lasted this much period, so I think that sort of goes well. But it's in the item service. And as everyone knows, technology's a matter of one of works. When it goes down, we can't function. I'd be okay with that.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second. Motion by Isaac, second by Steve, to authorize chair to sign off on contract for IT with twenty, the, yeah, three hundred hours for, uh, two thousand twenty FX Incorporated, which would come to a payment of two thousand two hundred fifty dollars per month.
So do you say the sheriff has to have a contract?
No.
Cause I see a lot of sheriff's on here.
They use our block hours. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. We got nine oh seven. Was there any public comment requests?
Uh-huh. Discuss office space at the Heritage Center for Child Resource and Referral Development. I was reached out about two weeks ago, um, from the staff of Child and Referral, and then Terry called me Friday, the director. What they're needing to look at is, this is the month they order a lot of books and shelves for daycares, that they need a four to six month timeframe to store all this extra equipment. Um, they would like to use one of the rooms that we do not currently occupy in the south wing, um, just to store this stuff for child resource and referral. They currently have a contract with us. I don't know if we ever put number on the door of the contractor. I feel that the master contractor would, unless you guys want to charge more, there's a very short time period, four to six months, to use another room for storage. Currently, they're storing it in their office currently, but that space is limited to, to conduct business, and they would like to have another office space. Just thought I'd bring that to you guys, if you guys want to allow child resource and development, another blockable room.
Not. Well, it's pointed in not being used.
Correct.
I know they have a lot of stuff in there this, this time of year.
It is. But they get ordered and they give out to daycare centers and other people, but they serve. Do you have an issue with?
No, no.
I don't. I would declare consensus that they can have another room. Dave, do you think they follow into the master contract as renting space?
We have a lease with them.
We do have a lease.
So, I mean, I don't think it specifies room or rooms. It just specifies space that they're using out there. So, I mean, they're sure it's about to cover it. The law suggests arguing the lease terms. I can double check the lease, but I don't think it's necessary to throw a sucker in.
Alright. Consensus, have another room. Thank you.
Uh, nine ten, meet with EMS Director Joe Pinnison. Good morning, Joe.
Morning.
First thing on the agenda is discuss the offer of a full-time EMT position.
Yeah, so, um, last week and the end of, uh, the week before, we interviewed five candidates for the opening EMT position. Isaac was a part of the interview committee. Isaac, you can comment if there's anything that you wanna touch in on this, but five very qualified candidates, um, we used a standard scoring matrix, um, that we were able to borrow from another, um, hospital entity or healthcare entity, kind of geared towards healthcare. Um, part of it was also a technical skill scenario that we had. Like I said, five very qualified candidates. It was a very, very good thing to see. Some people wanted to be a part of it. Uh, but one stood out about the rest in not only, uh, scoring matrix, but also how they, um, how they interact, interact with the interview team as well. So, uh, with that being said, uh, the interview committee came to consensus to, um, offer the position to Berto Uribe, um, who's currently employed with us as an EMT, part-time, just moving him to a full-time spot. Um, wage would stay the same, and proposing a start date of May twenty-sixth. Um, I know it seems kinda odd to start somebody on holiday, but it is the start of our next period.
Yeah, I'll say the interviews were very thorough. Most of them were close to an hour.
Yeah.
And we did look at qualifications, we did scoring matrix, probably fit the team, and I think we were all in consensus that Berto was the best candidate.
Would you like to tell us who the committee was that?
Yeah, the committee consisted of myself, Isaac, Brandon Anderson, one of our full-time EMTs, and Carlos, that'd be one of our full-time paramedics.
Alright, you guys have, uh, heard their recommendation. They went out for a full-time, and they brought a name to us. Any discussion on the recommendation from the Director Joe Pinnison?
What, uh, how many? Were they all current employees?
No, um, out of the five, three were part-time employees and two were employed outside of our department.
It's always good to be able to hire without them if possible.
Yeah, it was, um, like I said, they, um, there was, I'm very glad that we used the process that we used because it was, it was very difficult. They were all very good people.
Was there a motion to acknowledge, I guess we were, we were hired, right?
Yeah.
It's a fair approach.
Yeah, it's a fair approach. Is there a motion to approve with the recommendation from the board? Motion by Isaac, second by Steve, to approve the hiring of Berto, last name please.
Uh, Uribe. How about Berto Uribe Vasquez?
Fair enough. Uh, start date is May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, at the current wage he is making currently as a part-time EMT.
Seventeen forty-six, if you want to.
Seventeen forty-six. Any discussion?
How many full-time do we have?
So with the hire of Berto, he will be the second full-time EMT and one full-time paramedic.
He needs to replace your EMT that passed away.
Any other discussion? Comments? If not, we'll roll call Isaac.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Jake.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Welcome to the board. Um, second thing is review, approve resignation letter from Abe Carlos, part-time EMT.
Uh, so yeah, Abe, uh, was brought on, um, when we very first started. Uh, he lives in kind of the Nashouille area, does, you know, farm ops on El Vista. Um, we, I think kind of I explained it to you on the phone, but the two is, in order to, um, provide care in our ambulance, he's gotta be on the roster, but he's not meeting the hours requirement that we set for, which is unfortunate. Um, he's very good at what he does. It's just, um, he's, he's holding a place, so to speak, for the off chances of when he'll actually be able to jump into our truck and help us. So, um, with that, he agreed, uh, to resign, um, his position, and then we will, um, potentially look at maybe bringing on somebody who can be more beneficial to us, um, more often in his place. Um, I talked to Isaac a couple of minutes after the interviews, and we talked about, you know, once we got through the hiring of the full-time, would we look at maybe, uh, one of, one of these applicants who currently hasn't worked for us, bringing them on to maybe replace him, knowing that we would get, um, some more coverage out of him. And, uh, just because it's higher constraints, I wasn't able to put the hours together, but I intend to provide you guys a list of how many hours everybody's worked and the gaps that we're seeing in our schedule that's causing people to work more hours to try to make sure we have backup coverage to save service.
And did you get a letter from him?
I did.
And can I have that?
I will send it to you.
Okay.
Yeah. It was initially sent to me unsigned, so I will comment at least, just to make a mention.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a date?
Um.
Wait until he signs it or?
I, I believe, I remember I looking at it, it was May thirteenth was the effective date. And I can send you the unsigned copy. I just, I thought I shouldn't have him sign that, but he's busy in the field, but it's hard to track it down.
Right. But we do have.
Yes.
Unsigned, signed, whatever.
Yep.
Is there any discussion or is there a motion to approve the resignation from Abe Carlos as part-time EMT from the EMS department?
Motion to approve the resignation letter of Abe Carlos, part-time EMT.
Is there a second?
No, sir.
Motion by Steve, second by Scott, to approve the resignation letter from Abe Carlos, part-time EMT from the EMS department. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Joe.
Uh, we'll get together later about the insurance.
Yeah, and I, um, I sent you the schedule.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
The air conditioner will wait till the equipment shows up around nine thirty. Discuss county vehicle policy and the use of personal vehicles. So it was brought to our attention that the current policy, I think, was dated December fourteenth, um, that, do you have a copy of that policy here? I think I've emailed to all of you guys, got a copy of my insurance certi- certificate. So if you look at state field policy, use the personal vehicles, elected, elected county officers, employees, volunteers, who use their own vehicle for county business, and request a mileage reimbursement, shall be required to have an active proof insurance on personal renewal basis and purchase limits of three hundred thousand dollars combined single limits. So the insurance card does not show the limits on most providers, so then you would have to get a certificate of liability insurance, which shows the injury per person with a minimum of three hundred thousand dollars. So I just brought this up that I think within reason, if people are using personal vehicles for county business, um, you need to get this certificate to us as soon as possible. Um, I'd say no more than ten to fifteen days. At that point, then we can deny mileage reimbursement, because they have that following policy. Fair enough? Is there either consensus on that or a motion? I don't know how many people drive. Home care probably does, public health does, elected officials do.
People have not following the policy is what I, I think is going on.
Well, so it was probably miscommunicated. I think a lot of them provided insurance cards.
Okay.
But the insurance cards does not show the limits yet. So we have, and could I have anything from liability on the insurance card too? So the certificate, like I provided to the board as a copy of mine, shows my limits on my vehicle that I drive for county business.
And we get emails on that periodically. Maybe Andrew, one, I recall, got one, having to submit over. So it's not like it's a surprise. Someone from your office, I don't know who, they sent us that. I've seen it several times since I've been here.
So, Jim, would you like those, unless you're not requesting any reimbursement for mileage, just to give it to you, just to be on the safe side or?
So I'm wondering what would happen is if you were going to a subcommittee or attorney in Des Moines, and there was an accident, um, either your personal vehicle's gonna take care of that, or sometimes were you acting as a business entity?
I think perhaps just to get it.
I would say best if you don't submit a claim, um, because in the, in the long run, insurance companies like each other, they're gonna try to figure out who's at fault.
Yeah.
Was it a county business trip or was it a personal trip? So I guess to be on the safe side?
Yeah, I'd say that's probably.
If you don't collect mileage, I would say at least get something from the county auditor to figure out if, hopefully nothing, nothing happens, but if it does.
Right, already, even if you don't collect mileage, if, um, county business, you probably should add this one.
Exactly.
Um, if you're behind, collect mileage, well, you'll get one.
So if there's a consensus to get them in as quick as possible, so we are at least protected.
So I'm thinking ten to fifteen days. Should we just do fifteen days?
Just do fifteen days.
Okay.
If they're not in, let me know, then we can start demanding mileage claims.
Okay, and we have the consensus.
Is there a consensus? Travis?
Yep.
Steve, Isaac, myself, yes. Consensus has granted. Dave's here. Thank you. Discuss the air conditioner at the courthouse. Dave, any good information or bad information, I think?
Well, uh, we're kind of still at the same point we were before. Uh, the good news is the parts that were installed on the air conditioner up here have worked. It's been working real good ever since. Hasn't shut off, hasn't done anything crazy. So at the moment, we're okay. I guess back to the discussion of, do we need a new unit up there? Um, I found out the age of this one is approximately twenty-five years old. Um, McGage is the local plumber that installed it way back then, and, um, in discussing with him, so far, parts availability hasn't been too bad. Um, that's not saying that all of a sudden, in the next year or two years or whatever, they're gonna start not making parts for that particular unit. That's one of those guessing games, things we just don't know. Uh, I know we had discussed the board, with the board here a week or two ago, the possibility of setting some money aside for a new unit up there. Um, I had an estimation, this is just a rough figure, low end a hundred thousand, high end a hundred and fifty. That's more than likely where the bids would fall into place for a new one. Now, I wish I could sit here and say, I know pretty darn well when that one's gonna give up, but I don't.
So David did reach out to me to get this on the agenda. I put it on, um, just to have this discussion. I guess what the second alarming part to me was, is the timeframe to get a new one.
Yes, that, that, that's another thing to take into consideration, that the estimation is, uh, seventeen weeks to have a new one. So you're looking at a little over four months.
So with that being said, I did talk to both the county attorney and Dave. Um, we did ask McGage to do a spec sheet, um, to, to get a spec, knowing he might not get the lowest bid. Um, so McGage is in the process yet to get a spec?
He said it, it's, I talked to him this morning, and he said it takes a little while to gather up all the information and get all the info from the vendor, or I mean, the, the manufacturer, to put everything together. He's, he's planning on having that here in the next couple of weeks, but he said it's not something that he can sit down and write up in the next hour or whatever, so.
And we are gonna pay him for that service.
I indicated to him that we would pay him for that, being that it's a bid process to put a new unit up there, and in case that he wouldn't get it, then he's not doing all that spec work for free, so.
Yeah, so I think we're good there, because then at that point, we have a spec sheet from
Right.
A qualified, I have a plumber, and then knowing that he might not get the little bid.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Jake, on Friday, I kind of look at it as similar to an engineer's estimate, and you're basically paying him, just like the, we did the EMS building and everything else. We're paying him to basically draw up plans for us and figure out what it is, that when we do put it out for bids, we have an apples-to-apples comparison for whether we're bidding it. And it's not an unfair process that someone has the site information, that's what we need. Um, then they're gonna have a clean document to go out to everybody, a project of that size, you're gonna want a clean document, where everyone knows exactly what they're bidding, exactly what they have to specify, what they're gonna need. So it's more of a line to pay for that, similar to hiring a consultant or an engineer to get an estimate or get the spec work together.
So I guess when I heard the sixteen, seventeen weeks out, um, this will require a budget amendment. So if nothing else happens, um, we might go out for a bid in June, once we have the spec sheet, do a statewide bid process, and then sometime in July or August, do a budget amendment for this, I don't, if this board agrees to move forward.
If we want, this time of the year, we'd be out all summer.
Correct.
Yes, yep. That was my big fear when we were having issues with this spring here getting it going. I thought, oh boy, if we don't get this to run, this is gonna be not good for the coming months, because I knew Mick had indicated to me before that you just can't go unload one of a supply facility and haul one here. So, that's the bad word. I hate to sit here and say we need to spend that kind of money, but yet you just don't know when this is, you know, the life of it and the parts availability. The, the parts, I asked Mick this morning, I said, now we had problems getting parts for him up to this point. He said, no, we haven't. So the, and, and I said, that, that's good news anyway, that they're not calling and saying, well, this part is and that part isn't, whatever, so.
But it's been on its last legs for a while. Let's be honest, Saturday or Sunday before the burger trial last spring, I got the phone call that it wasn't working. I'm like, delay our trial. So it's not as though it hasn't been showing signs of its age, like all of us are.
Correct, yeah.
What font would this come out of? What font would this come out of? Come on, general basic.
This is for Department.
Go into Department Fifty-One, General Services. Unless we, this would probably fall under capital project.
Yeah.
It could come out of that one too. So I would say it would come out of either any fund balance of GB or capital project fund, which that currently has a balance of three eighty-six.
I guess if we have to do a budget amendment after first of July, and we have to wait seventeen weeks to get it, we're going to go through a whole other season, so it'll be another year older by the time it gets installed, so.
My feeling is do a budget amendment when we can in July or August, and then maybe install it October, November. Most likely that it won't be hot.
Right.
But then you got to shoot for no snow either, because that roof gets awful slippery.
Yeah, no, the installation process on it really isn't too complex. It's just basically a, I don't know, four or five inch pipe, water intake and outlet, weld them in, connect the wiring, and it's pretty well ready to go. So it's not like whoever gets the bid is going to be up there for a week or two weeks or whatever. I think this whole thing could darn near be completed in a day or two, so.
Yeah, it's in two to three days, removing, adding, and new.
Correct. So in that, that part of it, that's good, it's not a huge, huge deal, as long as you get a crane available, you get it up there and it all went off.
So yeah, I guess we'll come back with more information once we get a spec sheet and see what we do in June or July.
Okay, I assume there's no salvage value to the old unit?
I would think there would be some, but I know, one thing I do know about the old unit is, you know how this freon deal goes with the EPA? This stuff that's in here right now, that's, I guess that's another good point to bring up, is that the freon that's in there now is so expensive that if you ever had a leak and you had to replace that, it would not be a cheap thing to do, so. And then that's the bad part, is they keep changing that all the time. Now, I think, I think this one might be R forty-four maybe or something like that, and luckily, the last time that we needed some, Mick had a couple of containers available, otherwise we'd have had to pay, you know, a pretty hefty price there.
And so if we back it out, now we could be worth something for older units that you could resell.
It could be. And then as far as the, you know, the scrap value that goes, it's got some considerable weight to it, so, you know, it's copper and steel, so I don't know exactly what, what kind of salvage value it would have, it would have to be something, I'm sure, so.
Any other thoughts or comments on the courthouse air conditioner? I mean, it's more called a, it's a chiller, right?
I think it's a chiller.
That provides air conditioning for the courthouse. If not, we'll move on. David, if you want to stay up for this one.
Sure.
Review and approve Chicksaw County Volunteer Handbook, so we approved it go forward. Well, three weeks ago, the grass needs cutting, so this is on the agenda. We, Sheila and myself and Dave Gorman have looked at this, this is the same one that County Conservation has approved, which they got from Harland GB Head of Maker as a document. We changed it to Chicksaw County Board of Supervisors. Pretty much everything in there, they got to do the training, he reports to Dave Gorman, he signs in, signs out, he takes breaks. He has no usage to county computers or internet, and pretty much Dave, our head custodian, is in charge of this individual, or individuals, in the future maybe. They sign off on a volunteer program on the back sheets, they check all the volunteer agreement, code of conduct, friendly to all citizens that visit the courthouse. And you mentioned Community Service Building would be the only two that this person would mow grass for. Pretty much no tree trimming, pretty much just jump on a lawnmower and wear the PPE stuff or safety stuff.
Yep. I would do all the trimming and the edging and stuff like that, so. Basically, the individual that's involved here would just be on the tractor and then be it.
At this point, his name, you would like to provide the name for the individual that would like to do this and who are okay with?
Yeah, the individual that stepped forward and wanted to do some volunteer work for the county here as far as the mowing goes is Brian Mulgry. He was a custodian here part-time for five years, that's probably been about five years ago, so he's real familiar with what, what we, how we, you know, process the mowing here and where, where things are or whatever, so.
Is there any comments, concerns? Like I said, we won't let him start until he signs on page nine the volunteer agreement, and then you provide the training and the personal protective equipment and pull something up. Any discussion?
So we have a volunteer approved Chicksaw County Volunteer Handbook or a title.
Is there a second?
You said you eliminated this, this individual.
This individual.
Okay, so I'm going to show you not really just the handbook, and then I can jump and grab one, have something in my house. Person by person, just make sure.
Person by person, this is strictly around county custodians, and the check, check out. Like I told Dave on Friday, you know, there's a box here, how would you like to volunteer with us? And he's going to put down gardening, garden, and landscaping. He's not going to be doing any other arts, carpentry, construction, so. Any other concerns, questions? Otherwise, like I said, I have a motion from Steve, second by Isaac, approve this county volunteer handbook for volunteer named Ryan Mulgry. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion carried. Thanks, Dave.
Okay, good on you.
Next thing on the agenda, move down or back up to Engineer Roman Luntz, he can review it.
Review and approve permission to enter premises agreement with Dave and Donna Karnick.
Karnick.
Karnick, sorry, for Chicksaw County Bridge Replacement Project LFY twenty-six, Prentice two dash seventy-three dash nineteen.
So this one's on One Fiftieth East of Windsor.
We've gone through a few of these already, they're just coming in.
The next one is on Windsor South, One Fiftieth.
There's just permissions to enter premises.
Yes, they're fully signed off.
It's signed by the owners and Romanis. Is there a second?
Clear.
Motion by Travis, second by Scott, to approve permission to enter premises agreement with Dave and Donna Karnick for Chicksaw County Bridge Replacement. Authorized chair signature, it's up, okay, Travis? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, anybody opposed, motion carried. Second one is review and approve permission to enter premises agreement with Joanne Busta for Chicksaw County Bridge Replacement Project LFY twenty-six, Prentice one dash seventy-three dash nineteen. Roman, anything special?
Same story, different bridge, very close to each other, both of you are placed.
Both are signed off and then authorized chair signature.
Oh, who will chair signature?
Is there a second?
Clear.
Motion by Scott, second by Travis, to approve permission to enter premises agreement with Joanne Busta for Chicksaw County Bridge Replacement, and authorized chair. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion carried.
So last week, we did finish Division Four, which is the Southwest Quadrant in the counties, Division Four Contract Rock. Division One started on Friday, so that's going to move forward through the week, waiting to hear on Division Two and Three, I would assume coming during or after Division One is underway or completed. Blades were out fixing bad spots and dust, specifically dust controls, intersections last week, you know, we're getting into drier conditions now, but lot of spot rock being hauled. Crossroads over replacements, we had a few of those, ditch cleaning, couple of bridge road control projects, deck panel joint patching on Northwest Alawler. SC nineteen fifty, which we closed this morning because we got a deal on tanker cars, kind of out of nowhere. SC nineteen fifty is also on Windsor South, One Fortyth. That, that bridge was, the substructure was getting very aged, and I was kind of waiting on new tankers to work in there, and they're cheap. So we did get the right lengths submitted to us as far as an option, and we purchased them last week, so our bridge crew is currently working on taking that structure out for the end of this fiscal year, because it'll just be a maintenance structure, so. Windsor is now closed between One Fortyth and One Fifty, probably two week project, weather pending. Sign and shop, mostly normal repairs, equipment and signs, but we did have, we're waiting on bone stein or two, they put the wrong tires on our new tractor, they're too wide, they rub with the side more, so we're waiting for them to get appropriately sized tires on that. Sam's been trying to prod them along, but in the meantime, we're prepping the tractors that we do have for mowing. Altus Bist shop coordinating with Stanton, I believe is Altus Bist's provider for power, getting that disconnected. Northeast Side of Spray Foam, I believe is going to start tomorrow. And then on the same token, we did find a, our Fredericksburg roof is leaking, Dan, operator down there, noticed it, looked into the lease agreement, and we are responsible for that portion of work, so we'll move forward with that. Talked to Fredericksburg Jimmy Mitchell, and he said they don't think that there's any detectable leaks in their part of the building, but on the same token, they want to move to, I believe, by the fire station, maybe in the next somehow amount of years, so that might be something down the line we need to start thinking about. If we purchase the remainder of the building or how that will work out legally, or I guess.
Do we need all that space?
Huh?
Would we need or could use all that space?
It'd be something that I need to talk with the guys on to see, but on the same token, who would buy it otherwise, and are we allowed to keep our current situation with the fifty-year lease through, I think, twenty seventy-three? Something to keep in mind.
Yeah, keep in mind, because that'd be a mutual agreement, who would they sell it to if we are in the two bays?
Yeah. So on that same token, do we want to move forward with maybe replacing a roof if needed and insulation if we're not going to stay there? Because I kind of like guys that's on that one right now for you guys.
Yeah, I think that's a question for the city, to see if they're going to sell or sell part of it, or.
I would assume they'd sell all of it, the way Jimmy made it sound, because it sounds like they want to consolidate by the fire department, but he said it'd be years down the road, so.
That's kind of basically what he told me to. Did you redo all this years ago?
Yeah, yeah, we did. You did a great job.
Better to get rid of this mess, so.
I'm just saying, do we need all that space, so, because what do you got in there?
Maintainer, truck.
And there's six more doors or five?
Four.
Right, not sure, I know there's quite a few. You know, maybe the best would be to maybe coordinate with Fredericksburg if they do sell it, to where we are allowed to maintain our existing lease with any prospective buyer.
Let's pull up and see what's provisioned, say, for the lease.
Determination.
Could we use all in there for purchase, or we contemplate that, or what it was? I'm guessing it's in there, but I'd have to pull up and look. I can grab it and pick it together and see what's in there, as far as outs or remedies or what's to change.
Before we do anything with our portion of the roof, then, we'll wait.
I would wait. Okay, unless you guys think we should replace it?
Uh, let's see, aside from that, bridge twenty-four hundred on the Caldwell Blacktop, the bridge, for the most part, is out of there, the abutments are left in place for easy constructing the piers. We were planning on pounding some pile in the west pier last week, but the cofferdam collapsed inward on Friday, basically losing that lateral earth pressure to get to our footing elevation. The earth pressure on the outside and water pushed what the sheeting was holding, so now middle is bringing in longer sheeting. It's nothing that's our fault, it's just something they didn't anticipate to happen, so kind of a setback there, and now if we get the rains that they're possibly forecasting, that might be a further setback, but they are shrugging along. Bridge O two seventy on Three Hundred Street, East of E fifty-six, all substructure piling is now done, all concrete, aside from the west pier encasement, concrete is done. That west pier, I believe we're going to try to pour that this afternoon, hopefully, whether pending again. Kenwood Avenue, we haven't seen much action on that, we're just waiting for paint, and then that stop sign at the south end. I would anticipate, hopefully this week, if it dries out, I'm guessing we ain't going to see paint. Just hoping maybe this morning, but I didn't see anything out there, so hopefully by the end of the week that it's fully opened. Aside from that, it's been a lot of design and development, multiple projects, surveying, land generation. As I said, SC nineteen fifty on Windsor South, One Fortyth is closed today. We did attend the manual on uniform traffic control devices updates, which there's a new manual coming out, and each state has to implement it by a certain date, so myself, sign foreman and the sign crew attended that on Thursday. The week prior was more of the same, we did get retrieving shoulders on hard surface roads, those are completed countywide, there might be some spot areas that you see us doing as the year goes on, but for the most part, we did a blanket. Linked it up the whole county with that. Blades were out doing routine blading the week prior, we did have a safety training on five seven, we had three operators attend motor trainer, or motorator operator training in O line on five six. It's more of the same, I already updated the projects. TR seven ninety-seven research project, that'll be the first mile north of the Jericho Blacktop on Pembroke. That was slated to begin the first week of June. We are approaching Iowa Highway Research Board to fund our delta costs, anything above what we give that in a year, so hopefully we'll get twelve point eight to eighteen point seven thousand, either funded or reimbursed based off their decision. That's a joint project with us and Michigan and Iowa State, and then Crawford County is another county participating along with Chicksaw as far as the location of the project.
Do you have any questions or comments on secondary rooms?
Do you got, do you have someone coming through fifth?
Yeah, Travis will be here about ten forty-fiveish. Thank you. Discuss and authorize chair signature on Cost Advisory Services, Inc., also known as CASI, for fiscal year twenty-four certificate of statement. This is for DHS to be in the county building that we provide. They come in and do a cost analysis of utilities or footage. This has been an annual consulting firm that's defenses for us, so there's two things, you got a certificate of cost allocation plan that's submitted to DHS, authorized chair signature on that, and then the next item would be the bill of four thousand, four fifty. You can see in there that, oh, page was it on? They came up to a number. It's on page one. DHHS local administrative expense, they came, the total indirect cost we claimed on quarterly local administration expense reports for fiscal twenty-six is ninety-nine thousand, five oh five. I think last year we got about twenty, that wasn't twenty-four thousand from DHS to have an office in the county, in the county building. Pretty much all the requirement is heat, all the services, wifi, a desk, just if they have to meet with a client. They asked me about thirty-three percent of that total claim is what should we reimburse to the county? So you can take that ninety-nine thousand times thirty-three percent, is what they usually reimburse us for. Any questions on the CASI report that they do for us, for the past nine years, for sure? So the thing on the agenda would be the chair signature on the cost advisory. So the thing on the agenda would be the Chair Signature on the Cost Advisory Service for the fiscal twenty-four certificate statement. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve with Chair Signature.
Second, second, but I, motion by Scott, second by Isaac, to approve the Certificate of Cost Allocation Plan and authorized Chair Signature. Any discussion? If not, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion carried. And the thing that's attached is Review and Approve Cost Advisory Service, Inc., CASI bill for fiscal year twenty twenty-four in the amount of four thousand four fifty. Is there a motion to approve that claim for the service provided? So, is there a second? Second by Travis. Motion by Scott, second by Travis, to approve the claim for CASI for fiscal year twenty twenty-four cost plan service for the amount of four thousand four fifty. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion carried. Moving down to claims, payroll dated last Friday, May sixteenth. Is there a motion to approve?
Ooh.
Is there a second?
Sorry. This is just payroll.
Correct, this is just payroll. It's in the book behind us, if anybody ever wants to look at it. Motion by Travis, second by Steve, to approve the payroll for May sixteen, two thousand twenty-five. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, motion carried. There's two sheets for prior bills. Um, they equal twelve thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. It seems like a lot, but it's all credit cards, utilities, field, DSO, all that stuff. Total prior bills is twelve thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve prior bills, twelve thousand three forty-seven fifty-six cents.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Motion by Steve, second by Scott, to approve prior bill amount of claims, twelve thousand three forty-seven fifty-six cents. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye, anybody opposed, abstain. Motion carried four zero point abstain. The other claims are five hundred and seventy thousand four oh four sixty-two, a lot of spot rock, and, uh, the towel was also in there that I saw. Is there any concerns? If not, is there a motion to approve the claims in that amount? So.
Sorry.
Motion by Scott, second by Steve, to approve claims in the amount of five hundred and seventy thousand four and four dollars and sixty-two cents. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed, abstain. Isaac will abstain, motion is carried four zero point abstain. All right, committee assignments. Any committee assignments last week? I did want to bring up, I thought about this after your term last week. Is there, I know there was a committee assignment like three weeks ago on opioid, Dave or Scott, I didn't do, or, didn't add, or should we be moving something?
No, I couldn't even update. So we met, uh, I believe the end of April, I think was when we met, three weeks ago. Scott, myself, uh, Sheriff Schaubert, Lisa, the public health director, I don't know, different people else. Of course, sorry. The five of us met and we had Pathways on the phone. Um, we continue to explore the Too Good For Drugs program for fourth graders, uh, and that's already in the two southern school districts, Nashua and in Southern Fred, and Pathway's gonna look at expanding that to eighth graders, I believe, if I remember serves me correctly, and then also trying to get into New Hampton schools for that program. Um, so we gotta do some work on that to get into New Hampton schools, um, but that's the agenda and goal of the summer is to get that started for next fall. We also discussed some additional options. Um, help you guys with the name of the other program, at least that I looked into, Med, Metronome.
The one that Lisa?
Yeah. There's a different program, I can't think of the name of the different class, sorry, that. Um, Public Health could potentially help administer, uh, to address more seniors, uh, nursing homes and those types of folks and senior citizens with the use of opioids and addiction. Um, so Lisa's been working on that, and then we continue to get suggestions from folks. Um, the newspaper gave us their information, but it was kinda late for us to get it in, um, so we're gonna meet again, I think, in the end of July, and then try and get a plan put together, uh, for next fall. So we'll see some action, um, hopefully before the start of the school year to allocate some money and hopefully start spending some over.
Perfect.
Did I miss anything? About a while for our.
I will.
We just got a lot of ideas. We didn't take any action or make any recommendations, or I think come end of the summer, lots of our recommendations.
All right, thank you, guys. Anybody else have a committee assignment?
I had a intercounty meeting on Thursday, uh, it was a regional transportation authority meeting. Uh, we held a public hearing and approved the fiscal year twenty twenty-six Transportation Planning Work Program, uh, that we discussed, uh, reviewed chapter eight, chapter nine of the draft twenty, twenty fifty long-range transportation plan. Um, there was some discussion of this project updates throughout the different counties, um, and then there was some real general discussion of road vacation. Um, didn't seem like anybody really wanted to talk about that, so.
Sorry, was all it?
Yeah.
That's it.
See you. Um, this was not a meeting, but I can give an update on CSS. I took an email from the state, uh, was it last Wednesday, I believe, that they rejected our closeout plan now the second time. So I called Mary, the CEO, and Chris, uh, the financial director. Uh, we had a meeting Friday to go over the third and hopefully final plan, um, to be sent off to the state. It was mandated that it had to be in their hands by the end of business today, um, so it was emailed Friday. Um, they're, they're questioning the balance, they're, they're asking for the CSS to see how much money that they will give back to the state on June thirtieth. And that number's very hard to come up with. So I think the number was worth one hundred ninety thousand dollars is gonna be given back to the state on June thirtieth. Um, we'll see if they accept the closeout plan or not. We'll see. We have our meeting in Howard County on the twenty-eighth of May, and we'll see, I guess, how the next six weeks are gonna be taken care of. There's a CSS chairperson meeting with staff to figure out the closeout plan. Otherwise, move on down to discuss future agenda. If you guys have anything, let us know. I actually don't think we had much. The new budget, we have to appropriations and wages. Uh, we will not meet on Monday. And it's a holiday, Memorial Day, but we will meet the twenty-seventh. Otherwise, I just got a text, or sorry, an email at nine fifty from Travis. Lost some time on the trip. So far, construction, gasoline, ETA is ten fifty-five now. Sorry, we will have to recess. Until then, um, he did send an email earlier this morning that he tried to include the last data from Mary Ramel that was sent to me, I think it was Sunday afternoon. I sent that to Travis on Sunday night. He must've got to his office and read it, and that's what he was trying to prepare for. So his first one said ETA was ten forty-five, but now it's ten fifty-five, so I guess what do you guys wanna do? Just recess until eleven?
Almost.
Like I said, I apologize, he just has a travel, he didn't wanna come up last night, so. Is there anything else that I missed? Or we will, I will declare recess until eleven o'clock. We have recess at nine fifty-nine until.
I'm running this week, and we don't. First farmers anyway.